Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I'll call our meeting to order for our April Board Meeting. Board members, you have a proposed agenda in front of you. Let's see, we can have a chance to look that over. Anything to add? Or do I hear a motion? We accept this, approve this agenda proposal?
I can't have to bring it to them.
You got a motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And if everyone would please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Board members, you have mailed out the minutes from our February 28 regular Board Meeting. If you've had a chance to look those over. Okay. Motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. Also, today, you should have received an email with our disbursements for the month. If you haven't looked those over, take a moment. We'll be open for a motion to approve those disbursements. As I see those utility bills, I'd be more pleased that we approve that project.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
It will be. It sure will be. That was a great new proposal. Any questions or comments? A motion?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any discussion before the... All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. It's time for our principals report. I'll just say this to the principals as well as the rest of our staff. Thank you so much for all the preparation and the presentations and discussions you enabled at our offsite last Friday. That was a very, very good session. I learned a lot, and as the rest of the board did, and appreciated all the work that you did, informing us better with lots of data. So, we'll go ahead and begin with Ms. White.
Good evening, everyone. I want to present this intelligent, beautiful spirit in the form of a third grader, and this is Kaliana Holden.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kaliana Holden. I am a third grade student at Ralph Askins. My teachers are Ms. Lenore and Ms. Wilkerson. In third grade, we are learning pre-algebra, the water cycle, and comparing and contrasting reading passages. I love my school because I have caring teachers and kind friends. The focus at Ralph Askins this month is prepare for TCAP testing. We are very excited and confident that we will rock the test. Please come to our school on April 14, 2022, to join us for our testing parade. It is going to be spectacular. Well, there is one thing left to be said, Ms. White.
What is that, Kaliana? Go Tigers!
Hold up a second. Do you have any guests with you today for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Could you introduce them?
Yes, sir. This is my granny, Sandra Thomas. This is my grandpa, Mike Thomas. This is my mom, Betsy Thomas. And this is my dad, Andre Holden.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you all. No, thank you all for allowing me to be here. She did a great job. Good job. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for trusting us with your students.
Yes, sir.
And I will tell you what. This lady, you know, you always dress very well and very professional.
I know. I know, I got it. She looks absolutely gorgeous. Y'all should be very proud.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening. Thanks for having us.
Thank you all for having us.
Well done. Okay. Ms. Jean, Fayetteville Middle School. One of my girls, isn't she?
Hi, my name is Kayden Ragso, and I'm a fifth grader at FMS. We are busy with spring sports, preparing for our play, Robin Hood and His Merry Men, and of course, working hard to prepare for TCAP. This week, we have two home games. Our girls softball will play Tuesday at 6:00 against Huntland, and boys soccer will play Wednesday at 4:00 against Community. We hope you can come out and cheer on our Tigers. Thursday night, we will host a friendly competition between parents and students to determine who, if our parents are smarter than a middle schooler. This will be a fun-filled night as we ask our parents to answer questions that we will see on the TCAP test. Who will be smarter, parents or students? My guess is on the students. Doors will open at 5:00, and the competition starts at 5:30. We hope that you will join us. The current enrollment for FMS, fifth grade has 79 students, sixth grade has 90 students, seventh grade has 89 students, and eighth grade has 108, with a total enrollment of 366 students. Before I go, I'd like to let you know how much I appreciate my teachers. They are all kind and caring. I am excited for my first play. I will be playing the character of Lady Gertrude and one of the Merry Men. We present the play on Wednesday, May 4, and Thursday, May 5, at 6:00 in the FMS gym. Thank you for allowing me to come. Do you have any questions I could answer?
First of all, your voice is absolutely great. I mean, it's like made for speaking.
Thank you.
What did you do?
I slipped and twisted my ankle after I fractured it. Fractured it.
Third time in the boot, is that right? Reoccurring?
Third, fourth.
Do you have a guest with you, or anybody with you?
Yes, I have my mother.
And her name?
Erin Ragso.
Thank you.
Can you remind me the dates of the play?
Wednesday, May 4, and Thursday, May 5.
Great job.
Great job.
Okay. Mr. McCormick.
Good job.
Anybody there has something to add?
So, this year, we actually attended Scope. Me, Vince Kinsley, and Brody Baker all attended Scope this year. And at Scope, we actually did a mock school board meeting where I was elected as one of our school board members, and we had to elect a superintendent for our school board. And then also, we transitioned, and we got to do a lot of debate topics that all of us gathered in one room and voted on based on what we thought should change in our school board policies this year.
This year, we had four different debate topics, two of those on which being, should the school calendar be changed year-round, and should students meet a certain criteria to park on campus. Both of these failed with a 53 to 47 vote. So, it was pretty close, but both of those topics failed.
The other two topics were, should uniforms be worn by all students, and no students shall be permitted to leave campus during the lunch period. Those both failed. Everyone was definitely in favor of getting to go off campus for lunch. And nobody wanted to wear uniforms. Yeah, those were pretty easy. But it was actually a really fun experience getting to see how everything operated. We met a lot of cool people from TSBA, so it was a great opportunity.
Great job. Very proud of you. And Kinsley and Brody, they both have ballgames.
Yes, sir.
That's why they cannot do this.
Yeah, Kinsley was super excited about coming and speaking, which doesn't mean that no Kinsley, that's a huge step forward.
Tell them I'm saving their spot.
I don't know about Brody. They scheduled a doubleheader at Huntland, so that's spring weather for him.
Even though we might know who they are, Hannah, who's your guest? I gotta keep tradition.
My guests, I don't think they've ever been here before. It's Mr. Steve Giffen and Ms. Amy Giffen.
They look like nice people.
Yeah. I might have to meet them sometime, so, yeah.
My mother, Pam Bryson, is my guest tonight.
She's also new here, so.
We want to welcome Barbara and Y'all.
And TSBA sent me your certificates for having participated in Scope, and so I'll present those to you. Let's see, here's Hannah's. Thank you for representing us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. It's a good experience, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks for doing that.
Y'all want to turn around?
Oh, okay.
Mark, you want to get that photo in?
Sure, sure, sure. How about that?
You're not in, you're totally not in the way. Send it to your parents. Thank you. Enter Sandy. Enter Sandy.
Oh, and I got, I want to give you the other certificates.
Yes, yes.
If you'll take the other.
I'm actually hitting there, mate. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right. Supervisors' reports. Mr. Jones.
After having the opportunity to spend some time with y'all Friday, I've given the bulk of my report, but Mr. Clark had asked for an update on our speaker situation with football stadium. Rodney Holly is the gentleman who's installing that. He's been by a couple of times. We've got it determined where we're going to mount them, how we're going to do that. We're installing conduit and pulling wire over the next week or two, and then Rodney will be coming in. The speakers have been ordered. They're all at the high school. Everything should be in good shape so that we'll be ready to go and completely engineered, balanced, everything, you know, tip-top for graduation and for all of our end-of-school events. And Rodney has been doing a really good job. He's really nice to work with and agreeable, and seems like a hard-working fellow that knows what he's doing. So, I'm excited to see all this work out. And I know some of you have had a lot of experience there on the home side, right in the middle. And I think this will be, from what he says, you know, obviously, this is out of my realm of expertise, but Rodney seems to believe this is going to be a much-improved situation. So, we're excited to have it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anyone's thought of anything over the weekend that we didn't discuss at the work session.
There's no new news for payment, all that?
Not today. Although, yeah. Hopefully, Greg is coming by tomorrow, so usually, I get an email from Fire Marshal, so that's real time, so it would happen, you know, it could even happen tonight. But there may be some more news tomorrow when I get to see him in person, Greg in person. So, Tuesdays, and you know, that's when we get our recommendations for paid, things like that, when he shows up. Tomorrow, there'll be more news, but as of now, no. All right. Thank you all so much.
For any Tiger fans watching the live stream or the broadcast later, the loudest part of the sound system at football games and at graduation will now be mounted on the poles on either side of the stands. There'll be some little fill-in speakers on the press box, but that will not, they will not be responsible for ensuring that visitors can hear. Those will be the speakers out there on the poles. So, it'll be significantly a little softer in the stands. That's been punishing at times, but this should be a great improvement, and especially to have it in for graduation. That's awesome. That's good.
To leave a home game with no headache, I'm excited.
And we brought him on the field. Okay. Ms. Johnson.
Okay. Greetings.
Greetings.
So, I wanted to make you aware that we are going to be on April 28. We'll be having our spring CTE advisory meeting, and we're going to couple that with our gear-up meeting. We're not going to have breakfast. It's going to be lunch, but here's what we're going to try to do to adjust. We're going to allow people to actually join by Google Meet. You can either join by Google Meet if you can't come for lunch, but gear-up is actually going to pay for the lunch, and we're going to bring those all to the table to go over some information. Also, as far as CTE goes, having some really good conversations with Frankie, having those meetings, the mayor came. We're actually looking at potentially utilizing a part of the Frankie building as a welding program. So, they're willing to host that classroom within their facility. So, cross your fingers that that happens, because that would be a great dual enrollment for our students in addition to the industrial maintenance. To give you some perspective, Frankie needs 65 welders, and they have 45 currently. They can't even remotely find 20 more, and those are high-paying positions. And then some other things potentially on the horizon that, you know, are just kind of in talks, but bringing Toyota to the table and some other things for some potential opportunities. Also, May 5 is going to be the Career Fair that we do in conjunction with Lincoln County Schools. We also do it in conjunction with the TCAT. It's going to be at Ninth Grade Academy in that gym area. Last year, several of our students, basically, that's how Highway 55 hired their whole staff. And the kids sat down and filled out the applications online there. That's also where we make the introductions of our students with Toyota. That's a great opportunity, and we've got a couple of kids that are very interested in that. So, cross your fingers. We hope that pans out. Also, I want to brag, we're really, I want to brag on Mr. Jones and I brag on Lisa, but know that on the Esser, doing that construction piece, which is very tricky, we are really focusing on compliance and making sure that all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And today, Lisa and I heard a horrible story about another system that had to pay back some money, and we are putting forth a great effort. I appreciate the time Mr. Jones puts in, and Lisa's out of detail, because we want to make sure that, you know, we don't make a misstep. So, that's our big focus right now on the Esser piece. But do you guys have any questions for me?
The Career Fair is an evening event?
Yes. I think the time on that is 4 to 7. I'll send that invitation out to you guys. Also, oh my goodness, I can't believe, I almost forgot. Third week of July, or actually, it's the week after the 4th of July, we are also collaborating with Lincoln County and Montlo's Give Grant to do a coding camp. So, we're going to actually, at the middle school, host the students that are through fifth grade, well, fifth grade through eighth grade. Lincoln County High School is going to be the host of the night, the 12th graders in the coding camp. And those, we're going to set that up. Already talked to the chamber. They're going to, we're going to find some sponsors for lunch. We're also going to collaborate with Moore County. They're going to actually run a bus here on the days that we do the camp, and they're going to participate as well.
Awesome.
So, that is it. Any questions?
Appreciate the cooperation with the county.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Giffen.
Tried to write this big enough, so I haven't hit my glasses, but it didn't work, so. First off, just to let you know about testing. This year, the high school's testing online. I think we've discussed that before in the middle school. And Ralph Askins will be testing pencil and paper this year. So, our testing dates, now, I don't expect you to write this down, but just to give you an idea, Ralph Askins will be testing April 18 through April 29. The middle school will be April 19 through April 26. The high school has end-of-course testing, which is April 18 through April 28. They have dual-credit testing, April 28 through, and April 29, two days of that. And they have AP testing, May 3, 4, 6, and 10. We've gotten in all the materials for the middle school and for Ralph Askins, and those have been counted, and we're ready to go with that and double-check and make sure we've got everything on that. There's a lot that goes into that coding process. The counselors at the school and the assistant principals do a fantastic job of coding those classes, make sure we've got every kid in the right place. So, when the data comes in, it knows where to put everything and keep it all aligned. So, they, I just wanted to mention that, because they do a fantastic job with that and stand on top of that. And then I'm attending a attendance conference into this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I'll be going back and forth to Franklin for the spring state attendance conference that we do twice, we have two a year or so. Anyway, but do y'all have any questions about testing or anything, or anything I can answer? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Jean.
To add on to Steve, he's getting ready for testing, and I appreciate him so much. He's been working with Sarah to make sure that all of our students with disabilities are getting the accommodations and getting those things coded properly. We just finished up WIDA testing, and that got sent back on Friday. That is the test that we give our English learners to monitor their language acquisition, their English language acquisition. So, we're done with that. Alt-assessment window, the alternative assessment window is a little larger than the T and Ready window, so we're getting ready to start those assessments. Those are online for our students with the most significant disabilities. And I just want to say thank you guys for coming, those of you who came to our ribbon-cutting on Friday, but thank all of you for your support of our programs for students with disabilities. I feel like we're making great strides, and I'm super grateful to have a board that, you know, backs up my visions and makes things happen, so appreciate it. Is anybody having questions for me?
Thanks, Margaret. That was a great group of questions.
The muffins were good, too.
Please tell the chefs that they were excellent. Dr. Stiles is absent, so Ms. Young.
Just a couple of things. We have joined two partnerships for people coming into education in non-traditional fashion. UT Southern in Giles County has just been approved for job-embedded programs for anything, for anybody that has a license, a bachelor's of any kind, if they take the practices, then we can get them their teaching license through UT Southern in Pulaski. And another with I Teach, one of the programs that the State Department is encouraging us to participate in. Summer school, we will have at Ralph Askins, May 21 through June 23. And at FMS, the bridge camp there will be the same dates. The times at Ralph Askins will be 8 to 3 daily.
Monday through Friday or Thursday?
Monday through Thursday. Did I say that? I'm sorry. Four days a week, and we are currently enrolling students as we speak. So, if you know of any children that need summer school, we are currently enrolling. As a matter of fact, I enrolled about 15 this afternoon, so.
And so, what's our total?
Right now, I think we're at, right around 50 at Ralph Askins, and I think we want to say about 15 or 20 at the middle school. I looked at both of those today, but it was early this morning before I had a lot of teachers send me names, and I went on and put them in.
Is that the passing, like, what's the number we're finding?
The number that we're looking for at Ralph Askins is 115, and we're hoping to have 80 at the middle school.
And actually, when you say that, I've already attached the attachment for your, look the update, that actually has the budget and all that on there for the summer school.
We will be providing breakfast and lunch. The cafeteria will be providing that, and Mr. Jones is working with me for us to have bus transportation as well, so working on all that. And just a quick update on pre-K. We are at almost 40 students already, which is great for us at this time of year. We're usually about 20. So, we're about double our enrollment for pre-K right as of today. Excited about that. Any questions?
Can you give me the dates again?
May 21 through June 23, and it'll be Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I should say happy birthday to our CFO, Ms. Stone. We'll skip the singing and whatever, for now, for now, for now. Ms. Whittaker, what do you have for us tonight?
Just, you know, we're working on our budgets for next year, doing projections for this year. We went over everything on Friday in the workstation. Just if y'all have any questions for Friday, just, no changes since Friday.
I noticed that the TISA bill is on some of the calendars this week, right?
It is.
One of the committee, education committees.
We just hope the amendments don't continue to pile up and bog it down, because that's what typically happens, is that we turn something really good into something really bad by attaching multiple amendments to it.
Hopefully, that'll pass. That's a big deal for all school systems, really.
Thanks, Senator.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Facility, our committee reports, anything from facilities, transportation, Ms. Stone? Okay. Nothing additional we've sort of covered. There is one finance committee report, and that is, we need to approve the Broadens and Associates invoice number five. It's for $19,336 for project program management services on our FEMA project. And, well, this will be the recommendation of payment, right, that we need to approve this so that it'll, they go to the city as all these do, standard process. I'd make a motion that we approve that. You got a second? Any questions about this particular expenditure? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Insurance and policy? Anything? Nothing? Okay. All right. We'll take that over. Mr. Hopkins.
All right. I would like to recommend that we change Ralph Askins Elementary School to pre-K through fifth grade structure, and then change the Fayetteville Middle School to sixth through eighth grade as far as their grade structure. And I would like to make note that we've had, we've met with parent groups, we've met with teacher groups, we've met with, we've been talking to some students during our committee that I have, and I've met with administrators and some of the teachers that are involved. So far, it's been nothing more, nothing but positive. So, that is my recommendations to the board.
So, just to clarify what's happening here, the fifth graders have been at the middle school campus for several years, and the idea is they'll move back to the Ralph Askins campus starting next year. Will that begin this fall?
That will begin this fall.
Will they be in the annex with the fourth graders?
They will.
So, they were able to cut down the class sizes, or move them to bigger class sizes? That's what I figured would happen.
Yeah. It's going to be, great questions, and I think that it'll benefit the students, that the parents will do that, and if we vote on that tonight, I mean, if we approve that tonight, we will go ahead and start publicizing that so that parents can be getting ready for school year, when, you know, make their decisions on what they're going to do. It also allows us to go ahead and get started with the teachers that need to be put in place.
Right, right. And the logistics, they'll be involved in both facilities. Board members, y'all, any comments? Y'all hear from parents or anybody?
I've had multiple parents asking, and I think it's been overwhelming, yes, that they would like to see this happen, so I'm glad that this is a recommendation. Feel positive about this change.
What's going to happen with the old fifth grade classroom at the middle school? You know, it's already been done, or?
That's going to open us up for other activities. You know, right now, obviously, with our construction that we have, great questions. We need that space, and so, you know, portables are going to disappear, so there's things that we could add in that. And our high school is the largest it's ever been, so if there's an opportunity that we may have to move some classes over there, we can do that. So, that would help us to be able to, because that's where our crowd is, really, in the high school, and just relieve some of that.
And this would get us to a true middle school or high school grade structure on those, you know, buildings, which is.
Yeah, see, it's the way that the state does the testing and is designed that way, so.
All right. Any other comments? Or would be open to a motion about that recommendation?
I'd like a motion that we approve Ralph Askins to pre-K through 5 and FMS to sixth grade.
And a motion? And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right. Well done.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like approval of an overnight trip for Fayetteville High School FFA chapter to attend the Tennessee State Benarian Science Competition at UT Martin on October 22nd and 23rd.
So, I'm, you got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Discussion? All right. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right. Thank you all.
I'm going to.
I thought you might be. Great. Anything else, Ms. Hopkins?
That is all that I have.
All right. I only have one matter, and that is that it is, it's a resolution of appreciation for our support staff. And just as a reminder, this group will include school secretaries, bookkeepers, attendance clerks, receptionists, our SRO officers, teacher assistants, and school nurses. And if you'll indulge me, I'll read what we are, the words in this appreciation. Whereas, "The support staff in the Fayetteville City School System is an outstanding group of dedicated school employees who care deeply about the students, whereas our teachers and administrators depend upon our support staff to prepare learning materials, operate to prepare learning materials, operate the office, and carry out business functions of the school, tutor, counsel, advise, and guide individual students, and perform a variety of other activities that result in an improved learning environment for students and their teachers throughout the school year. And whereas our support staff is made up of individuals who have shown a commitment to our schools and the students they serve, whereas members of our support staff bring a positive and pleasant personality to the schools along with a calm demeanor and a willingness to let others occupy the spotlight and receive credit for success. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fayetteville City Board of Education hereby establishes April seventh as Support Staff Appreciation Day. Be it further resolved, the Fayetteville City School Board expresses appreciation and thanks to the support staff in our school system, and encourages each school to recognize and join in the celebration of these individuals on that day for the role they play in the success of our school system. Be it further resolved, the board endorses the use of the Flintstones theme to celebrate support staff members beyond, uh, because the honorary staff, uh, and students will have fun with this theme. Uh, approved, uh, that's, that's up for our consideration this, the fourth day of April twenty-twenty-two.
Yabba dabba doo.
That's what he said.
Somebody got to say it.
That's right, that's right. I'm all in.
You got to go on?
Morning.
Thanks, my, thanks, make a motion to it first.
Okay, have a motion? And a second for that resolution? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yep.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. All right, uh, the only other thing I have is that our next board meeting is May second. Does that look like a good date for everybody to be here? Monday, May second?
I'll be on the plane.
Okay.
U A O's graduation.
Oh, all right. Are you all getting?
Two big, two great.
Yeah, all right. Any other, uh, dates? Anybody, is that date, sorry, anybody else?
I'll wait through.
Okay, okay.
And our graduation, Fayetteville High School is the twentieth?
May thirteenth.
Is it thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, okay.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up.
Yes.
Any other business?
Prom.
Prom business?
Saturday night, uh, the grand march, six o'clock at the high school. And then after that, uh, care heading to the back forty?
I think it's just right there at the state line on the right, maybe?
We just sense cannot have it for the back forty after that, you know. People said that for years, but that was, that's not it, it was placed.
It's a literal. Um, and we, I, we'd be remiss if we didn't thank the city, uh, for their flexibility, Rec Department especially, for their flexibility on field accommodations and whatnot. Our, our softball girls are playing at the Kids Park Field. Seems to be working out just fantastic. Um, and, uh, and the soccer complex is a story in itself. That is just a marvelous complex.
That's a good comment on soccer, so.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your vision, the mayor and the aldermen for the vision they showed for that, and the investment in quality of life.
The soccer complex is, is, uh, we, we probably have some more plans for that later on. It's, it's a working practice.
Well, it was absolutely beautiful, and I, I heard nothing but great things from everybody that attended.
Including parents of the oppo, of our opponents, of, uh, parents of those players.
Well, compared to what's been found here, it would, it would be good.
That's right, that's right. They were very.
But I have sent a message to Pam, uh, Gentry, to have this cooling looked at.
Oh, well, here, okay.
Yeah, we got a meeting up for Saturday, or quite a bit here today. It was supposed to be a cooler Saturday, but I don't know about how cool it's going to be in here with this, uh, meeting we've got, so. I have sent a message to, uh, there has been some talk. I don't know if it's issue or not, but we, we have talked about, uh, trying to just go in and replace it all. Take all the old out, put the new in. Whatever we, we can budget for it. It's probably what we're trying to do, because stuff's old.
It's, it's, you know, you think about it, when the city developed this, or, you know, the school board, I guess, paved it outfit this upstairs, that was some years ago.
It's been, it's been a long time.
That was dead date ago.
I'm sure the equipment, I know the mayor's been talking about having a look at replacing all of it, so. Don't know if it'll be this year or not, but a little bit should get done.
Any final comments? Otherwise, we just hang this round.